Good morning.
Boys ready?
At this time they call the Tuesday, December twenty 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 two meeting on the Jackson County Board Supervisor's order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis, myself, Jack Willie, our supervisor. We have Lisa Smith and the Attorney's Office and Luanne Goke, our Administrator Assistant. First item on the agenda today is not Kenny Jackson County Engineer. Mornings.
Morning. So have three items here. The first item is the oil spill contingency plan, just an annual update. A few changes, basically the biggest change would be the response coordinator has now been changed to the Assistant County Engineer. Just because we were, we thought about that, we just wanted to make sure there was somebody that was going to be here. You know, in the office every day, so we put that towards that responsibility. And then a few minor other than that, a few minor changing, we just verify like dependencies, B and C and the flow chart, what to do in case of a release, all those phone numbers are still accurate, like calling their response, the D and R, like safety clean, all of the people you've called for assistance and something like there was or any so.
Who's, who was previous before today?
The county engineer.
Oh. Okay.
And you review this annually, so you know, you know, next year, a year after that or whatever, if you want to move back to the county.
Makes sense, he's here every day.
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
I would make a motion to approve the oil spill contingency plan as presented. Second, have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All right, I motion carry.
Does that need chair signature?
Excuse me?
Does that need chair signature?
I was just looking, usually, yeah, there's a signature page.
So does your motion include that you have authorization to chair to sign?
Please.
Usually there's a little signature sticky there, but I wasn't taking it off. No, Stacy, Stacy wouldn't slip, it's probably, I probably took it off. All right, let's see, next item is the skid loader quotes. The reason we're doing this is because to recall, we had budgeted about sixty thousand for pickups and another, what was it? For ninety five thousand for a sign truck, which both of those items we can't get, couldn't get ordered. So talked to road foreman, shop foreman and decided that we would like to get a skid, skid loader, compact skid loader, so it's got tracks. Something we could use for color maintenance, bridge maintenance, on patching jobs, you name it, they're pretty handy, you don't see too many contractors, farmers, what have you, that don't, don't have one, so.
Well, I've been advocating for years for one of them, I figured it would save them a tremendous amount of time and trying to get it from
So the
To clean up some of our roadside.
Yeah, so three attachments we're gonna get right away are the brush mower, solid state, believe, believe brush mower, a coal cleaner, so milling head, so we can mill out bumps ourselves like on asphalt. And then we'll probably have getting to set a fork for it too, just over eighty to have, so.
So. Are you telling me you got quote for it?
Right here in front of me.
Hang on. So that's okay with, within our procurement policy. How many bids did you?
One, two, three, four, five. For equipment, you don't, I mean, you could go out and buy something directly, you don't necessarily have to get quotes.
Okay, normally we do, and we open the bids or the quotes in here. So that's just been our practice, so.
And we can do it either way, the thing with opening here, that's fine, but then usually it would take another week or so, because we would have to
Have to review.
So I'll do it either way, you guys will do it.
I'm perfectly fine with it, you know, you guys did your due diligence and then trying to buy a piece of equipment.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, the only thing is, it just puts it another probably week behind making a decision. But if you guys want to physically be in here, opening letters, that's fine too.
Well, that's just been our custom, so, whatever.
And I can do either, we're good. Okay. So there, like I said, there's five quotes, we got quotes from Kuna, which is Kubota, Altover Caterpillar, PK John Deere, which is obviously John Deere, Reader Brothers, which is Bobcat, and Martin Equipment, which is John Deere. How many what?
How many horse?
About seventy-four, seventy-five horse. So the low quote came from Kubota, Kuna for sixty-six thousand, two dollars and fifty-nine cents. The high was PK John Deere, Macocota, at seventy-three, seven twenty-eight. So the shop foreman and went through the request for quotes back and then contacted the the different dealerships. We just met with him this morning. He came back with a recommendation to, for the, the cat, the cat's bid was seventy thousand, one seventy-two. And the reason he's recommending that is cat supplied some additional equipment as part of their package. The track suspension, there's a return to work component to it, self leveling, which is, comes in pretty handy for the milling planer. It has the switchable controls from ISO to the H pattern. It comes standard with a radio and a backup camera.
Here.
Yeah, so that's, that's cats is seventy thousand, one seventy-two, Kuna's is sixty-six thousand, two dollars. P and K was seventy-three, seven twenty-eight.
Now the deer.
And the other deer, the deer from Martin was sixty-nine-two. They're the same, same machine, three twenty-five G machines. So the recommendation would be to get either the, the cat with the additional equipment, pay the extra roughly four thousand dollars, or go to the, if you want to just get the base little bit, it's the Kuna machine.
Then how much more do you have to add to get toward the cat set?
So like the, I called, we called Kuna to get a radio and a backup camera, which would be probably the basics, we would want to get the backup camera. Is twelve hundred dollars. From what I understand, they don't have the track suspension option, so that's something Cat has, and other, I guess, other dealers don't. So it's kind of you know, it just depends on, you want to spend the extra, you know, four thousand for those to get the
Because I've run Bobcats with the tracks on them, if you're on hard ground, it rattles your teeth because of that suspension. Well, he's talking about the Kubota compared to the Kubota though, it's the cheapest bid.
Is the less, least expensive, the lowest bid.
Who knows is a Kubota, not a Bobcat.
What's that?
Who knows is a
Kubota, so my, the recommendation would be to get the lowest quoted machine, which is Kubota. Or to get the cat, which is at seventy thousand, one seventy-two. If you want to buy the extras, package stuff, then you, it's, I would recommend you get the cat, if you want to just go the bare bones, and just get the stuff that buy a machine with the stuff that we asked for in the quote, the low quote is by Kubota.
Well, knowing some of the equipment and knowing the history of some of this equipment, I would say resale and overall operation, I would lean toward the cat myself. I would too.
I, I mean, I don't, any one of these machines, I really don't think you're gonna go wrong.
Yeah, is there specs, I mean, even fuel consumption, something like that, you know, I know a lot of them were that they're varied quite a bit, but.
Yeah, I don't, as far as the, the machine size, the horsepower and all that, we have that spec as far as I mean, looking at fuel consumption, I have a deal on that, I mean, I could probably go back and try and find some, but with a skid steer and what you use it for, it's gonna depend highly on what you're using it for and the operator.
Absolutely. We did have a comparison between Cat and John Deere for the road riders.
Yeah, that's a little different, yeah.
So the cat gets, uses one less gallon per mile or per hour.
Well, again, those are very subjective, when we, when I track fuel consumption, I use it just kind of as a a big picture kind of thing, but unless there's a significant difference, like a couple, a couple gallon per hour difference, I mean, terrain, operator, there's a lot of different factors that play into why one machine burns more fuel than another, age, you know? So I mean, it's good information, but it's, it's something you have to take with a bit of a grain of salt when you're looking at buy new, put that way.
Well, I, I, I guess if it's up to me, I would go on a recommendation of your service department and your guides and I would make to recommend I would make a motion to purchase the cat.
Well, we have a motion and a second to purchase the cat at seventy thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. Starting further discussion?
Can we address the board, please?
Pardon?
Can we address the board, please?
You certainly may.
I'm Tim Sherman from Martin Equipment. Our light industrial stuff is handled by Jacob Ambroga. And, and he did a pretty significant in-depth study into these light industrial machines, when you put them side by side. And, and actually, if you look at the competitor that's recommended in this case, the operating specs of that machine compared to the three twenty-five John Deere that we presented, there's a significant difference, the machine weight is significantly less on the competitor's machine. The gallons per minute is less, the operating pressure is less, when you look at the performance spec of the boom and bucket, we're picking up a significant amount more than they are. We can actually be where they are with a size smaller machine. So we just asked the board to consider some of those items when making that decision. And when it comes to products for, those machines are built in the Bug, Iowa. And we think there's nobody that's gonna come in here, that's gonna provide the product support and uptime for the company, rather than John Deere, so. Thank you for your time, please let us know.
That's a very good point, by, and I probably can take that into consideration as far as where what was the quote for the, the dollar announced?
And I think, you know, when, when you get operating, we have a number of contractors that are running that same size machine, that are running those big severe duty brush moors on the front. And weight is everything when you're running those moors. Because if you go to pick it up, or you got some heavy trees or something that you're in, when you go to pick it up, if you don't have the weight on the machine or the flow to run that attachment, you're not gonna keep it cool when the ambient temperature gets up eighty plus degrees. And that John Deere has a standard reversible fan in there. It's, when it comes to running high flow attachments, it, it is the machine to have.
Yeah, so the high flow, what, what it was, that's what we expect was high flow hydraulics. The, the flow that we spec is, is more than adequate for what we would run the, the brush cutting head for. In Clint County, we have a Kubota SBL seventy-five, we have the exact same brush cutting head, and we've had it for three or four years, and that's what we use. We haven't had any issues running that, but yeah, that's one of the reasons why I respect the high flow is for the, the brush cutting head and then also the coal cleaning head, so.
So personnel have any comments on the deer?
What's that?
Did your personnel, your, your employees have any comments or any input on the deer?
No, that, you know, the, it doesn't come with the backup camera. It doesn't offer the track suspension. But I mean, like, like Tim was saying, it needs every, all the respect I have, it's just that the, like I said, the, the package stuff, it's kind of like when you buy, like, if you're buying a vehicle and you buy a certain package, LTL versus LTC, the the package that come with the, the cat has a little more stuff thrown in, if you want to pay the extra to get that, if you want to pay for that value of the extra stuff, that's why they recommended the cat, if not, then then if you're just gonna buy what was, what was asked or spec, then, then that's why I was saying you know, Kubota is the lower quote.
And you, we, we presented our proposal based on what you asked for, I mean, we, we had backup cameras available, but you didn't ask for one.
Right.
You know.
So that's why, but it's, it's a decision between, and, and that's why I'm saying it's a tuition between the cat with the extra stuff, or if you just want to look at what was spec and what was supplied, which John Deere did and which Kubota did, then Kubota is still the little quote, so that's where I'm at, I guess. And, you know, Kubota is you know, Kuna implement is here in the county too, so that's something else to consider. Just looking, all the other things that politics aside, you know, looking at the machine, the shop is recommended, we give the cap for what it provides for the money. If, if you want to consider other things like service, location and all that, then I, I would say that Kubota will be
Does John Deere have this suspension on it too?
No, we don't, no, not in that frame size, we don't offer that.
Large frame only. Well, there's one step bigger than these yet.
Two size. Yeah, it's a couple, yeah.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. During further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented? Does the maker of the motion wish to withdraw his motion? Does the second wish to withdraw a second? Okay, is there a new motion to be presented?
I guess for discussion wise, I, you know, I respect that you're here representing your machine. I respect that it's local. The suspension thing, I guess also goes into time spent, I suppose, in the machine, so.
I really think the backup camera is essential, really, an essential part of it.
You can get it on every machine.
Sure, I know that.
So like I have a cost from John Deere and I have a cost from Kuna to add that, so I know what that is, but we didn't ask for it, so
Right.
Those numbers for, for the Kubota and for the John Deere three twenty-five G are for the most part apples to apples, it's pushing here, yeah. Because one doesn't have the camera and another one not have it, so.
I honestly don't think we'd go wrong either way.
That's what I'm saying, but.
Where's the Kubota made, you know? I mean, we all have a lot of input locally, I suppose, or buy locally and county policy, always to take a little bit or to look at other.
I think you always have to look at the machine and what it can produce, and if there are benefits from one to another, we've not always bought the lowest price machine.
They're brought in from overseas, I think.
Caterpillar is?
Yeah, yeah, okay. And it, I'm sorry, keep interrupting, but the board has always put in their motor grader bids in the past. Recognition of the Iowa preference law, so I ask, we, we see these machines that are working in this environment. They don't have an easy life. And I, I just asked the board to consider preventive maintenance costs and uptime.
So Kuna's is sixty-six thousand, two dollars, and if we added the radio and camera, that's another twelve hundred.
Have you voted on your motion, have you accepted your motion?
They withdraw them.
So you've all voted on?
Oh, you have to vote on withdrawing the motion?
Well, that's what I'm saying, do you?
I don't think so, there's nothing to vote on if they take the motion away.
So what I have for the minutes is motion Stein is second McDevitt to withdraw the original motion to purchase. And you don't need to vote on that.
We can, but I don't think when
Okay, no, I just want to make sure that I get
The motion, it doesn't exist anymore.
Okay, I'll just put it as that.
I think if there's no, if there's no ISO motion anyway, it drops to the floor anyway, so it's just
It cleans it up in the minutes.
Right.
Otters like clean minutes.
You know, we try really hard because somebody's gonna ask us about it.
I, you know, I guess, you know, the other side of it is, we've dealt with Martin before, with graders and other equipment that we have, and I, I feel like we're I mean, this, this does service, your service department, okay with the service they're getting from Martin?
Yeah, they're okay with the service they get from Kuna too, I mean, I, again, like the recommendation was for the cat or the, if you're gonna go for the basis, it was gonna be the Kubota machine. That's the recommendation.
Okay, so I guess if we're gonna do our due diligence, we, that's the recommendation, and we're gonna take the lowest bid that's available, then I would make a motion to buy the Kubota.
Do you want it with the extra?
Yes.
With the camera and the radio?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion? A motion and a second to purchase the B Kubota from Kuna Implement at sixty-six thousand, two dollars, and add the radio and the camera for an additional twelve hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right.
I motion carry.
All right, last item is the final payment voucher for the four hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue Bridge Project. Just need a motion to authorize the board chairs sign that.
Hmm? Can you tell me what time my list?
No.
They calculate it and they send to the bill.
Yeah, so this is, when we do the voucher, basically, the final voucher, there should be no pay items, it's just the retained amount. Is what, is what happens.
Did you make a motion, Larry?
I did.
I would second. All those in favor? I, I, I motion carry.
Last thing, we did the shop inspection. So this is a report, these are the items deficiencies we need to correct. I talked a little bit, I think, about these maybe, but most of them are small. You know, we need to add a first aid kit for the truck shed under the sign that says first aid kit.
That'd be good.
Paint aisle walkway lines to delineate walkways, lanes in the shop. We need a flammable cabinet, cabinet where we store the paint in the shop. Dispose of, there's a handheld drill with a cord that was all mangled right up into the, the oculate that goes into the, to the drill itself. We have an overhead crane slash cherry picker that we either need to decide if we're gonna use it, fine, we need to, but if we use it, it has to get annually inspected. So we need to decide whether we're gonna keep it and get it inspected, or decide we, we don't really have a need to use it and get rid of it. Because if we have it in the shop, it needs to be inspected. We need to create emergency action plans for each shed. These would be for, if there's a fire, what to do? If there's inclement weather, like a tornado, what to do, that kind of stuff.
Do you have a shelter down there?
What's that?
You have some kind of a shelter down there, basement area?
In the shop?
Yeah.
No. Oh, they got a crawl space under the wooden floor of this area, no, so really, like, we don't typically, so you would tell them where to go, and then when it's over, the biggest thing is, is word report, so you can make sure everybody, you have everybody that's, that's supposed to be around. And then there are some outlets in the bathroom that aren't ground fault interrupter circuit, so we either need to get those upgraded or remove those. The drill press needs a three-sided guard, so as you use the drill press, the guard needs to keep any clothing or whatever getting wrapped around the drill itself. And then the ramp is the big thing. There's a ramp that goes from the parts and inventory storage, like back room area. It goes west up a pretty steep incline into a raised, like, false wooden plank floor. It goes up thirty-four inches and like whatever, what was it, seven or eight feet, I got notes on it, but it's not compliant, so we either need to figure out what we need to do with that, either put steps in or take out the false floor and redo the overhead door that faces south, and just make it drive straight in at grade. I, I'm guessing years ago, that, I think the building was built in nineteen fifty-eight. I'm assuming, you know, you didn't have, when they deliver certain items, they didn't have the drop, you know, the time it looks like they have now. So they needed a a ramp or a Yeah, so, a dock, thank you, that's the word I was looking for. So now I don't think it's really a necessity, so we do need to figure out if we want to spend the money to correct it or but just do the cheapest fix, which would be putting in stairs until we basically replace that facility, so I don't, we're gonna have to, I'll probably come up with a cost estimate. I think we can do a lot of this ourselves, like take out, I mean, it's, it's wood plank, like decked plank flooring is what's in there.
Yeah.
And I don't know what's underneath of it, I'm guessing or dirt or something, and hopefully it fits on a concrete floor, if it doesn't, then I think we're kind of stuck, because I don't want to pour a new floor in the place, so we'll probably just keep the, the wooden deck floor, footsteps in, and invite our time until we can get that facility replaced, so.
So the ramp to get the code would be thirty-six foot long, one inch per foot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'd be into the cold storage truck.
Yeah, amen.
Yeah. So it was a little scary when I heard the guy said, yeah, we've been taking fifty-five gallons of drums down with a two little cart and all that.
And it's scary.
I don't want to hear that. So we gotta dress.
They probably got somebody in front of the hole.
Yeah, the guy that gets crushed by it when he hits it.
Is that crane in working order?
When I say crane, it's a, it's an A-frame with a center B there, like
Is it homemade?
Yes.
Okay, so it's got a chain hoist on it or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A manual or a motorized?
I believe it's I don't know for sure, but I'm
Okay.
Believe it's manual, but if it's, if it's electric, it's just one of those little small like
I guess you'll have to determine what you're gonna do there.
Oh, I have to have a deeper discussion with the shop.
On the breaker thing, I mean, the outlets and the thing, you could change breaker, the ground fault breaker for the whole circuit.
Well, the, the outlets that are in there, the ones, so like they got, they got a light fixture screwed in, it's, they're really old, and it's got an outlet out of the fixture.
Oh, yeah.
So
You can do that with a breaker.
Yeah. But I'm guessing what I was gonna have to do is just put like newer LED, like fixtures in, and then we don't, you don't, it's not like we need to be in there doing our hair in the bathroom, so we don't, we don't need outlets anyway.
You might.
Yes. Yeah, but they still will be doing their hair. That's all I had.
Now, Todd, when are you leaving on vacation?
Uh, when do I leave? Shouldn't notice.
I think your email
Twenty-eight.
Oh, that's about said twenty-third.
Twenty-eight. Wait, I believe, okay, so yeah, I'm on vacation starting the third, but I'm gonna be here, but physically, well, I'm leaving to I'll not be in Iowa.
So you'll be here next Tuesday?
No.
Or no?
I'll be on vacation.
I didn't think so, so I just wanted to tell you, since this will be our last meeting together, I've really enjoyed working with you, I think you've taken us
leaps and
Way, way, way ahead of us, we were in the past, and your, your recommendations have been right on, and thank you so much.
Oh, I appreciate it, thank you. Oh, I appreciate it, thank you, uh, and I. I do appreciate it, and it's been, it's been fun, uh. You know, uh, helping out throughout the years, kind of get a little bit of a, a flavor for what, you know, what goes on and everything. You get, I mean, we're all in this together, right? County government, you know, trying to provide a service to the public, so. I appreciate that, and enjoy retirement, I'm sure it's well deserved, so. You've been on the board a long time, so. You serve many terms.
Eight.
Yeah. It's amazing. Maybe each year I work in county government, I'm, I'm more and more impressed with the length of tenure of serving the, so. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Alright.
That'll be a vacation holiday there, Todd.
It'll be.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll have my, uh. Like, I'll have my computer and phone, obviously, so I'll, it's not like I'll be. Un, untouchable, unreachable. Bermuda, no, I don't, I don't have that realer money.
Okay, the next item that, um, we have is citizens and visitors, and I believe John wanted to address the board briefly.
So if it's okay with you, um, John and I talked this morning, so. I will do my, uh, part of the agenda today, and then John will jump in if that's okay. Uh, so this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two work proceedings as written by Auditor Smith, and authorize publication in the official newspapers.
A motion and a second to publish the previous four minutes, all those in favor?
I.
I motion carry.
Nelson, in motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants for the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
Motion to approve, does that include that extra one?
It does.
Okay.
Yes.
That includes the greater. A three hundred thousand dollar.
Oh, okay.
I would second.
My motion is second to, uh, approve the claims that were presented, all those in favor?
Alright.
I'm motion carry.
I also need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the November ninth, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
What's your second to approve the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes, all those in favor?
Alright.
I motion carry.
Um, I also need a motion this morning for. Yeah, I should just. In a motion this morning to approve resolution number nine thirty-three dash twelve dash twenty, dash twenty-twenty-two, setting the twenty-twenty-three holiday schedule for county employees.
Motion to approve. And nothing's changed with that, correct?
We did not, we did not change anything.
Okay, with motion a second to approve the setting of the holidays for twenty-twenty-three, all those in favor?
Alright.
I motion carry.
And now with John. So my next, next motion will be to approve this for fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-four cents to Bill Bruce Builders, Inc. Eleven thousand, forty-two dollars and forty-four cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc. Three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents to Chosen Valley. Ninety-four thousand and fifty dollars to Rock River Electric. And seventy-nine dollars to Republic Services for a total cost of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, sixty-eight cents. And authorize chair signature on the project cost recap from the law enforcement center for month ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
We have a motion and a second to approve the payment of bills for the new law enforcement center. All those in favor? I.
I.
And those are included in the claims listing for today, those will get paid.
I have two change orders to approve for the law center.
Yeah, those are cold, John.
I, I know.
John, you haven't sent for me?
Uh, yeah. So. Uh, we, we discussed this, uh, the first one is to Bill Bruce Builders Incorporated, uh, change contract one, change order one. Uh, there is some additional footings required to support the interior precast panels in the booking area. Which was an add of nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. As you'll see by the paperwork in there originally, it was twenty thousand dollars, and I. Worked on the estimate and such, and we're able to get that down. Uh, the second, uh, change order was for the additional dye above the specifications that we had. Thirteen, uh, proof, pre-gas color. It added about fifty pounds of dye. Per yard, so it was an add of fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-ninety cents. For a total change order, uh, add of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh, it'd be our recommendation that we approve, uh, change order one dash one to Bill Bruce Builders. Uh, are there any questions or discussion?
We certainly need footings.
Well, yeah, and I guess I am not. I mean, I, I don't understand why they weren't in the original, I guess, if they were on the specs or if they were.
They, they were not shown on the structural, specifically.
So does that go back to the architect, or does that go back to?
Well, the way I look at it is that we're in, uh, in the plans.
Yeah.
We would add a higher cost anyway.
Well, my guess is yes, but normally when you have a change order, your change order is normally higher, and that's what, like to measure cost up most of the time in your change.
Yeah, we, we should, to change order down, what we need to.
So do we have a motion to approve? Change order number one?
Yeah, I would make that motion, but, uh, the, the numbers you gave here has. Are not indicative of what is on my paper here, I don't. It says thirteen, five, ninety-four.
See, that's why, I, you know what, I must have typed it wrong, because it should be one sixty-eight, nine ninety-nine, sixty-eight, that was for. So you know what, I must have typed it wrong into my minutes yesterday, so actually, my original motion to pay all those bills is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents.
That's what I have.
Yes. Yes.
Can I ask a question? Who, who determined these extra footings were needed if they were not in the original architectural plans?
It was determined because, uh, it was interior precast, and all your interior precast has footings, so we counted in the field. And, uh, also the structural engineer and architect got it that we were required to have those. Footings in those particular areas to support the precast, kind of, interior precast concrete.
Well, if, if there's a wall there, it certainly needs to be a foot in there.
That's for sure.
Heard the precast, yeah, because that, that takes place of your steel, so that structural component is required in it.
Wasn't it been, been with steel first, or you think it didn't get fit?
No, it wouldn't have been bid with steel, it just didn't, the footing just didn't get.
Wasn't there.
Wasn't there originally, because determined it was needed after the fact, and, uh. So it was added into it, so it put it in.
Okay.
But like I said, originally, they had a price of, uh, you'll see the paper, twenty thousand dollars, we were able to. Take a look at it and get it down to nine thousand, so.
I believe I did make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
I second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Alright.
I motion carry.
I have one more, one more motion that I need, and then do you need to address the board?
I got another change order.
Okay. Is that for the law enforcement center?
Yes, it's for law enforcement. This one's a little bit better. Uh, this is change order, uh, contract three plumbing, change order number one. Uh, I looked into. And requested a, uh, proposal to provide backwater heater. Uh, in lieu of the PVI water heater that was specified by the engineer. Uh, used backwater heater and three or four other facilities. Uh, it's a good unit. It resulted in a deduct of eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Uh, so the total deduct was worth eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-four. Be our recommendation that you approve change order three dash one. To, uh, Kraus, only in evening. Any questions in comparison?
No, you say it's a good unit, I, I.
Yep.
Is this a gas unit or electric?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And natural.
I'm natural, yes. It's same, you know, same type of unit. PVI has a lot, it has, you know, a few more pills and missiles, but you. Like, well, it's inexpensive, I mean. So.
What's the pleasure of the board on the, uh, change order?
Motion to approve.
I would second.
Motion in a second to approve the change order, all those in favor?
Alright.
I motion carry. Let me just sign these copies.
Yeah. You got another motion for me, was on.
Uh, no, because. They've already authorized the chair signature on the project cost recap.
So do we need to, uh?
Uh, that was gonna be my next motion.
Okay.
And, uh.
That was the question I had, who will sign those change orders for the?
I have.
Okay. Okay.
And, uh, it'll be oh, seven, seven, seven.
On the. Yep. But whose was that? Oh. For yourself?
Yeah.
It'd be twenty-five cents, not thirty-five cents, okay. So my next motion then is to approve invoices for nine hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc. A hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and six dollars and ninety-five cents to Peak Construction. Three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents to the city of Macochica. And forty-two thousand, thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents for purchase orders and additional contract. For a total cost of a hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seven cents. And authorize the chair signature on the project cost recap. For the Jackson County Fair and ISU extends to the Fordage Outreach Center for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
They'll move.
A motion and a second? All those in favor?
Alright.
I.
I have Karen. One change order for the Fairground Project. So this is all, so. By the excavation rebar and footings for the. Dexter County Fair in Iowa, ISU Outreach Center. From Peak Construction. For a amount of a hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. Uh, originally, that was, uh, estimate that was included in purchase orders as they. Anticipated that Peak Construction, or I mean that Peterson Construction was gonna do it, and they had a proposal. From the head, we had a proposal from engineering firm. And they decided they did not wanna do it. So we removed. We decreased the purchase orders by eighty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, which was the estimate in there. Of course, with the prices today and concrete and stuff, it came in a little bit higher. Uh, the hundred and four thousand. So, uh. It was not in the project to begin with, but it was in the estimate. Of purchase orders when we approved the project, so.
So the difference is twenty thousand?
Yeah. So it'd be our recommendation that we approve, uh, changes, foundations. The people's construction.
The note says there's no cross protection. What's that part of it?
Uh, the Geo peers, I've already talked to, the Geo peers were put in.
Oh, okay.
So they're sitting on Geo peers, so they're not required to have. The cross protection, they're down three foot six, and the Geo peers were drilling, put down.
So, okay, so studying on those.
Yeah, basically, when we originally looked at it, they wanted to overexamine, kind of put down. And then separate the dirt, put the good dirt back in, and it was gonna be. Substantially higher than forty thousand, and we just paid for the Geo peers.
Okay.
It was gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars or something. They have several in-kind contributions. In this project, you know, through excavation and such, that, uh. The owners trying to get in kind contributions for, and that was a part of the footing in foundation work.
I would move to approve.
A second, a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
I, I.
I want to.
How many of those did you put in? Fifty-seven, fifty-seven.
Can you have another copy of that?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
That's all I have for you, Jim, I guess, but you have questions for me?
Our things going along?
They're over there working today, so, you know, plumbing's going in right now.
It'll be insulated by next week. Yeah, we get a full snow, it'll be insulated.
Well, it, it's covered now. He, Jay came in and, uh, covered it with, uh, blankets for us and at no cost, so. Uh, they've been good to work with, and, uh. So it is blanketed at this time, protection. I understand, and they started pouring the precast. Uh, they had a opening on Fridays. So they started pouring their precast, so we're still on schedule to get that precast twenty-fourth of, uh. January, in direction. All the steel, when everything's out, there's some buildings should go up. Quickly.
Okay.
I agree, it is how many weeks?
Eight weeks, probably, to get, you know, I, I figured it's gonna be about eight weeks to get all the steel. Decking on and stuff, and then just started ripping.
Okay.
So, it, it goes up right.
Can they do the roofing type thing in everywhere?
Alright. Yeah, I think it's mechanically faster, rough system. So. If it's fully adhered, then you're depending.
Well, we don't worry about contracted expansion so much, I mean, I guess they have that figured out.
On, uh, steel decking, yeah, you, you wouldn't have a bigger problem on that. I, I figure you're probably going to be more into March, April.
Yeah, probably.
You know, in eight weeks, if you get that. You know, when we get, uh, precast twenty-fourth, you're gonna have. At least ten days of erection on that, and then you're gonna have. Steel, your parlor, everything well done, and then your decking has to go on, then you have to get your wood blocking around the parapets to attach the. Cap flashing and all the roofing too. So I, I figure we're gonna be in March. You know, at that time, which is good, cause we won't have to provide winter heat inside.
I was gonna say, when would you start heating the inside?
I, I'm hoping I don't have to heat the inside, but, uh. You'd have to have the roofing on, or else you're just gonna have rainforest in there anyways, cause that. Heat's low up in here, but. I didn't say, so. Uh, I'm hoping that we can get enough, if we did anything, we'd probably use ground heater possibly.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, John. This time will be joined by Lou and Gokki, our executive assistant.
Good morning. Good morning.
Calendar for this week is very short and sweet after one busy day. When we are finished here, um all of you are going to head off forward to Buke. For the R P A meeting. Um which is required for Jack and Larry, they're on that board, and then there's a joint board with D Mats and the Iowa D O T at eleven thirty. Also, all of this out at E C A's building. And then at two o'clock this afternoon is Mississippi Valley Workforce C E O meeting by Zoom for Jack. Thursday, December twenty second, starting at one in the afternoon, is the courthouse holiday celebration. Um which is a progressive snack party, basically every office brings in their own snacks, then we just got a cruise from office to office. We'll see how that goes in a snowstorm, we'll see how much how much activity we have there. Um Friday, December twenty third, and Monday, December twenty sixth, the courthouse will be closed. For the Christmas holiday. And it will reopen on Tuesday, December twenty seventh at nine A M, and that's that will be our next meeting. And I think. That was all the business I had on the agenda for today.
Thank you, Lin. Because of uh our meeting interview, Lynn is waiting and coming next week. To go over the information for our board meeting yesterday down in Davenport, um. It was uh. Why can't I think of his name? Gary M T V A um was in and talked a little bit more about. His his promotion for our center. And um. Really has some great ideas and uh they're working with a group of students from St. Ambrose. That they have a a group that's called Gray Matter Matters. And um they're trying to uh get information out to the students there if they're having any. Crisis situations that they can come to them and then they will help them get to where they need to be for help. And um he still said he's on board with his coloring book that will be for preschoolers and um early. Um five and six year olds um that he's doing it about. Three drugs or three dragons are the characters in the book and so that'll be um presented. And it's uh. It was really exciting, lots and lots of good, lots of good information about that. And we did renew um a contract with him for another six months. Um so he will be contin- continuing to assist us. Anything else from anybody else?
If not. I've been in, I were talking, just an update on the office space, we all agreed what we were going to do down there, and I had been in conversation with. Um Kathy Gaylord from the judicial branch. And we pretty much have an agreement uh. Um on the, they're gonna have us, our people, the orange people, do the wiring, and we've come to agreement about that. Box, I'm gonna call it a box.
Yeah.
So either just put a partition around or they're gonna put a lock device on it, and I said that's that's mine. So we are proceeding with getting the one offer prepared um that we.
Have we decided, are we going to share in the cost of that, because I got a, there's Kathy Gaylord with. At a. Her request that we share.
I relayed to her that we didn't think that was our responsibility to move that box to our art section, then she agreed and. She took it back to her branch people and we have agreed that. Um they will pay their portion and we sent her the bill. They will pay their fresh portion of the wiring for the opposite of the boat and. Okay, so yeah, it worked pretty slick, they were, they were, she was happy to. Talk about it, have a conversation and agree to it. We got our conservation meeting last night, so Tuesday night, like normal. Um good news, we got a sixty, around sixty four thousand dollar grant to redo the boat ramp in Bellevue. What's the cost of that, by the way? Um about eighty thousand. Yeah, that's pretty good. Add about thirty percent, we'll probably take that out of reserve fund. So and. There's an eight hour meeting coming up, which may is going for the. Middle Lake in St. Bula. Uh just a federal project, they're gonna re. Direct chat and put islands in there and make it deep enough for a fish habitat. That whole South St. Bula Lake. It's about a twenty five million dollar project. I mean, they've been working on this. Yeah, he's been promoting that for a long time, I mean, that is quite an area, they if it comes from somewhere, but it wasn't coming out. Uh too deep a pockets. No, that's a great project.
Becky, did you have something for us?
Um so you guys have a public hearing coming up that in our zoning administrator is ill. Um and she cannot attend, so I didn't know if you needed any information before that, if anything is normally presented to you before the public hearing.
I think we all are familiar with what public hearing is allowed, so.
She was gonna try to zoom in, but that's not even an action, so.
Okay.
That's fine.
And that's it, one time, nine thirty.
Okay, at this time we'll recess until we re-adjourn for the. Public hearing and open the public. Okay, this time we'll reconvene the meeting and we'll open the public hearing for um. Ordinance number. Three oh nine. Has anybody had any calls or comments on the?
I have not, I know the area and there's probably a. Good proposed ordinance to change. With what kind of type of work and and what's he using it for, what is he using it for? Um he does construction out of it, um some logging out of it, of course, um his dad was in the logging business. But he does a lot of construction, does a lot of education type thing.
We'll note that the uh zoning administrator is ill, so she's been here, so Becky Cheaton is kind of. Guiding us through, bringing us some information about. It's the Ryan Rezoning. Mike's familiar with the area, um I know where it's at, but.
So Lauren had submitted a copy of the ordinance, so this is at three oh four four two three hundred and ninety fifth avenue in Bellevue. Um section thirty six of Township eighty seven North bring for E of Tatumor Township, um and the purpose of. The ordinance change is to rezone this property from A one agricultural to M two general industrial. For the purpose of correcting the zoning district to reflect the current and historical use of the property. This proposal is consistent with the county land use policy and meets the standards for the review of rezonings. They did have the public hearing at the zoning commission meeting on November twenty first, at which time the zoning commission did approve this without. Um further stipulation, um so now we're here for the public hearings for the adoption of the ordinance.
Did we get anything, Luin, any contacts or mail?
No, nobody contacted me about it.
I haven't had any either.
An option, uh can we have a motion to close the public here? Second, a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Um do we have a motion to approve? Oh, all of us in favor. I was moving ahead. Do I have a motion to approve the uh ordinance number three oh nine? And in doing so, if you want to waive the second and third public hearings.
I made a motion, wait a second, I'm there to public hearing on ordinance three oh nine.
And approve the ordinance.
We did that already, right?
You have not approved the ordinance.
No, we just closed the public hearing.
Yes, and approved the.
Mike moves to approve the ordinance number three oh nine and to waive the second and third public hearings. Any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi, hi.
I. Motion carry.
If there's no further business before the board, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, I have a motion in a second to adjourn, every, everybody have a great Christmas holidays. And hope Santa's good to everybody.
What? You ain't got much protection there, Jack.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor.
Hi, hi.